Good morning, the meeting is now called to order, bringing items from the public. The record show there's nobody from the public, also, we do have Commissioner Boyd on video this morning, good morning, sir.
Good, sir.
Good, good. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Purchase order log, are there any questions? I had two this morning that she's already very satisfactorily cleared up for me. Anybody else have any questions for Tracy? And, let's see. Thank you Tracy, there are two internal budget revisions, Mr. Y.
Yes, sir, the first one is from the sheriff in account seven sixteen, which is animal control, asking for permission to move fifteen thousand dollars from his salary line item into overtime. And the reason, as you well know, he's struggling with vacancies and has a lot of people working overtime, so it's a, just make a slide from one line item to the other, and the second was from Chief Court Marshal Mike Lang, asking to move three thousand dollars from his material supplies into his training.
Very good. Change of status, you have a hiring recommendation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications, for Beverly Mason, as a telecommunicator trainee with an annual salary of forty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars, that's effective ten twenty-seven twenty-five. Hiring recommendation received from Martin Roberts, Fire Chief for Brad Wright, as a part-time firefighter with a compensation rate of seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents an hour, that's effective ten sixteen twenty-five. Change of status received from Gary Wine, County Administrator, for Chad Wine Brenner, Deputy County Administrator, for a ten percent temporary increase for additional duties, with an annual salary change from one thirty-three nine oh three to one forty-seven two ninety-three, effective ten one twenty-five. Change of status received from Gary Wine, County Administrator, for Alia Tucker, Executive Assistant, with a ten percent temporary increase for additional duties, with an annual salary of sixty thousand nine hundred to sixty-six thousand nine ninety, effective ten one twenty-five. Change of status received from Gary Wine, County Administrator, for Kirsten Emrick, Administrative Assistant Two, for a ten percent temporary increase for additional duties, with an annual salary change from forty-four thousand one hundred to forty-eight thousand five hundred and ten, that's effective ten one twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, for Melanie Murphy, Tax Office Floor Supervisor, with a voluntary step down to Tax Deputy, with an annual salary change from fifty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars to fifty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars, that's effective ten fifteen twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Stacy Horton, Tax Deputy, to promote to Tax Deputy Floor Supervisor, with an annual salary of fifty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-three to sixty thousand six hundred and ninety, that's effective ten fifteen twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, for Francesca Loretta, Tax Deputy, would promote to Conservator and Estate Manager, with an annual salary range of forty-two thousand to fifty thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars, effective ten fifteen twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, Director of Communications, I'm sorry, Director of Community Corrections, for Jeanne Blaylock, Drug Screening Technician, that's effective ten fifteen twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections, for Danny Delia Jr., Part-Time Driver, that's effective ten two twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from the Honorable Larry Hess, Assessor for Bobby Ann Foltz, Clerk, effective ten six twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Brian Ross, Director of Community Development, for Sean Becker, Residential Building Inspector, and that's effective ten fifteen twenty-five. On the October approval of the minutes, Commissioner Boyd was not present, so if we could go ahead and get a motion to approve those.
I moved. Second.
Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Stay.
Let the record show Commissioner Boyd has abstained. They get caught up to you all here. We do have a letter of support, request to sell alcohol at a private event, that is to be held October the twenty-fifth, at Magnolia Fields Venue, at two-one-twenty Rock Road. And obviously, the Commission cannot endorse this event, and accepts no liability for the event or the associated activities. Is in our consent agenda. Bond reduction, Rees Hill, Section One, Phase One, Grading BCP File Number twenty-four oh three dash zero seven five, is tied to twenty-four oh one dash zero zero four, and twenty-four oh three dash zero six three, Bond Number NFB seven four six nine 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 four. Engineering makes that recommendation. Have a bond reduction for Cardinal Point, Section Four, Phase Two, Lot's one through seven, one twenty-eight through one thirty-nine, and one forty-seven, one fifty-two, Final Plaid, BCP File Number twenty-four oh nine dash two seventy-one, tied to twenty-four oh nine dash two seventy, two-two oh nine dash two sixty, and twenty-two oh five dash one thirty-four, that's Bond Number one zero zero seven one, one two seven three. Bond Reduction, Bridle Creek, Phase Six, Section Two, Lots four forty-eight, four fifty-nine, and four sixty-four to four seventy-one, BCP File Number twenty-two oh one dash zero one zero, tied to Number twenty-one twelve dash four forty-eight, and zero five eight dash one eight, Bond Number one zero zero five zero seven four seven four. Warranty start, Bridle Creek, Section Six. Sorry, Phase Six, Section One, BCP File Number twenty-one twelve dash four forty-eight, tied to twenty-one zero two dash zero six two, and Number zero two one dash one three, Bond Number one zero zero four seven five six one one. Engineering makes those recommendations. This time I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moves. Second.
Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, our Assessor, Larry Hess. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Got a few for you this week. First thing I have is a taxpayer error. Yeah, I think she forgot to mark it on there. This is a first offense. She just didn't print it on there, but it's for a hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents, they forgot to mark off the vehicle, but it is a first.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the one personal property tax exoneration due to taxpayer error.
So moved, Mr. President. Second.
Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it.
Thank you. And I do have, I think I have thirty personal property exonerations, we had, this is about two weeks of stuff here, and this is some extra that we've added, but we got a total of thirty of them, for the reasons that's listed in, and they're all for like double bill and different things, but total amount for those thirty adds up to eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the thirty personal tax exoneration due to officer, an amount of eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents.
So moved, Mr. President.
Then moved.
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thanks, sir. Thank you. All right, next are our board and meeting reports. Commissioner Boyd.
Yes, sir, we had a Roundhouse Ford being last night. There's a good bit going on down there, some, the, some corrections to the electrical on the HBAC, that is finishing up this afternoon, and that should be a go. Once you get that final inspection there, the upstairs will be usable, we did discuss rents and things moving forward, where that upstairs, but we finalized the new rates for the general other buildings, but we are still doing a little more research on the side with the HBAC, the bridge machine upstairs. So there's still a little more cleaning that needs to be done, once this electrical gets finished, and then, of course, the inspection, but it's pretty close and ready to go. Farmer's Market is winding down ends here at the end of October, but then we have the Mary Makers Market, that kicks back off December sixth and seventh, twelfth and thirteenth, and the twenty and twenty-first of December each weekend. It'll be Santa Claus, a lot of Christmas things going on down there. And went over the schedule for the upcoming next season, a home show starts is from April eleventh and twelfth, and then the kickoff from Farmer's Market next year will be April eighteenth. We've been working with CEC and McKinley Architecture and Engineering to go over and work on priorities with the money that we have received from the federal HUD money. We've prioritized the concrete floors in the Frog and Switch Shop, as well as the Bridge and Machine Shop, and ADA, and fire accessible doors on the Bridge and Machine Shop, to get that downstairs online and going. And talked a little bit about next year's market, it will step out and be handled by a nonprofit, and paid as a rental fee directly to the Roundhouse, so, other than that, that's most of that meeting. That's all I had.
Very good, those improvements will make a huge difference in that facility down there.
Yeah, yeah, really excited, it's been a long time coming, but, you know, there's still a good ways to go, but a lot going on, and it's getting usable, so we should, we should be having some regular income really soon.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Hardy.
Yeah, so this week I had a planning commission meeting, which I was not able to attend due to some personal travel, but went through the agenda, and it's all the pretty, pretty normal stuff that we do on the planning commission. I did have a few phone calls from some legislators in regards to an issue that was going on on some personal property with a cemetery. Spoke with President Gokenhour about this, I also spoke with our Planning Department about this, and also had a great conversation with Susan Crowe, who heads up our Landmarks Division, and we're all working together to try to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and making sure that there's no cemeteries or property that may have been a cemetery, and the headstones have been removed, that's being destroyed. I also had a meeting with a few of our local delegates in regards to some legislation that I think is going to be helpful to taxpayers, working forward on some of the legal ad stuff, so as you know, some of our legal ads have to be printed up to three times in the paper, any, any local paper, with our paper going to being only printed once a week. That's caused some problems with the Planning Department and other legal divisions that need to print that stuff, so not that I don't think that they should be printed in the journal, but one time should be sufficient, and then maybe looking for some opportunities to try to do something else, using our website, using a state website for the second and third times, just to try to make that a little easier for people to access faster, and also a savings to the taxpayer. That is, we, each county spends quite a bit of money every year on legal ads that they are, have to do by West Virginia Code, so we're going to take a look at that code section and see if we can try to have some alternative routes, to even see if we can just use the, the digital version of the paper, to be able to put that in, so just trying to, trying to move forward and keep up with technology in the changing times, so. That's all that I had this week, and looking forward to next week, going to be a lot of meetings next week, next week's a busy week, I've got Hepmo, Water Department, and a few others dabbled in there, so.
Very good.
I can add to that concern, you just published through your clerk, the financial statement, and you're required by law to publish for your annually, the list of any vendor that you spent greater than fifty-five, fifty dollars to, the name of the vendor and the amount of the purse, cost you two thousand dollars for one print, and that just happened this week.
Sure. Very good, Commissioner Whitaker.
Had no county meetings, but just, there's a little bit of an issue still around eleven with the traffic in the reaching out there, I had a couple people ask me about it. I said it's an ongoing concern of everybody's, but we're, they're moving, moving in another direction.
Yeah, good, that's, that's not a good situation, if people park right along Route elevens, too many.
Plus with the, with the activity of the third lane turning in, just down a little bit further north in the school, and there's going to be quite a congestion of traffic here for a while. Please be careful.
Yes, sir. Commissioner.
I've seen a lot of different schools in the county, and Orchard View out on the Board Orchard Road, is that they literally park out on the main road to get in to pick up and drop off. Edgesville Route nine, the school there, out on Route nine, no turn lane, it's a, it's a nightmare. I had two board meetings on Tuesday, the Sewer Board met. The two big projects that are coming to fruition are the Eco Lab redesign and all, and then the Woods Resort Treatment Plant, and that is up and running, and they're tweaking active final stuff, but they seem very pleased with both of those improvements and a good bit of expense, obviously, the Woods Resort was a nine million dollar project, so for the treatment there, and, but both are, are working in this way that they hoped that they would at this point. We always follow the Sewer Board meeting with the Stormwater Board meeting, and of course, the big topic of this conversation was the MS four permit, which is on the agenda for later today, we'll discuss when we get to it. I did want to say this about the Sewer Board. There's a situation here in Berkeley County, we've been working on with the DEP to try to correct. It's a development that doesn't have access to our public sewer system, it has its own plant, and the cooperation that we've gotten from Secretary Ward and the DEP has been wonderful, amazing. The follow-up has been amazing, and I'm very pleased with the cooperation we're getting now. Most of the time, we've talked about the DEP in the past, it's been negative, but the cooperation since we met with them in person has been extremely great, and I'm very, very pleased with the, the reaching out to us and trying to help us on several different projects right now, so. Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Sir, I would, I would tell you, all the governors' secretaries that we've had the pleasure to meet with over the last month have been top-notch, and that's, it's nice, it's a nice change.
Yeah.
I did have a commission meeting with the Development Authority, I serve on the Infrastructure and Government Affairs Committee. So we had Thomas Butcher in from the Power Company, Curtis Keller with the sewer, and Jim Walllett with the Water District, just to talk about not only their challenges, but their triumphs of, of their services that they provide here in the county. So things are moving, you know, all those agencies are extremely busy, trying to keep up and try to get ahead, especially with the power, you know, with the, with the opportunity for data centers to come into this region. Potomac Edison is, is trying to get, get themselves in a position to be able to service those. Our Water District, everybody knows it, they got a couple major construction projects going on for future water. So those are all good things, the Development Authority is still moving, you know, our, our director's still getting calls almost daily about other companies that want to locate here and bring jobs here. So those, those are good opportunities for that. I was not able to attend our park meeting, but Gary did, if you would like to speak on that for a minute.
So the Inwood Park Construction Meeting yesterday, everybody on site, there are no issues, we had their first application for payment. As you've seen, the site's cleared, they're prepping, they're setting their seismic, whatever, the seismic sensors, getting ready to do some blasting. They're working on power changes now, and doing some of the big power work that's on site to move the overhead to underground, so it's exciting times, but everybody's moving full, full ahead, so eight or nine months from now, you should have a useful park.
Absolutely, they've had good weather. Weather's been excellent.
Yeah.
Little dry.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Right next up.
Can I ask Gary one more question, maybe want to comment about the accident with the tree over at the Sheriff's Department, is that under control?
Yeah, yeah, so in the midst of the rain and stuff, night before last, you had a about a thirty-six inch diameter base tree fall over on the Sheriff's Department that punctured the roof in a couple places, destroying one of your brand new, brand new HBAC units. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a process, insurance claim's been filed, we've interfaced with the property owner on the other side of the fence, so all moving, but it's, it's dry as we speak, got some blue tarts on the roof right now.
Yeah, I think in a moment, just to thank Commissioner Catlet and Commissioner Gokenhour for taking the trip to Charleston and meeting with the Governor's Secretaries and those areas that we talked about. It's really important for people to see your face and, and to make those relationships and have those meetings face to face. You know, email and Zoom is great, but there's nothing like walking in someone's office and shaking their hand and sitting down and, and having a conversation with them, so I appreciate you all's travel time, and Gary yours too, going down and meeting with those secretaries, and, and trying to build those relationships, and have them start to understand the, the unique challenges that the Eastern Panhandle has, and every county and every region of the state has challenges, but they're very different. So I appreciate your all's willingness to go down there and spend time doing that, thank you.
Yeah, and Commissioner Catlet's been working very, very closely with West Virginia DEP. So he's, he's got a real good rapport with them.
Yeah.
I've talked to Secretary Ward at least four times now on the phone personally, since our meeting down there on three different projects, and he's followed up on all three of them, and I couldn't be more pleased right now, so.
So far, everything they've said, they came through, so we're happy with that.
That's great. Next up, we have the Honorary Commissioner, Sean Sue, St. Joe's School, good mornings.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sean, can I have you come up here, and we'll get you standing in front of the flag, and I'm going to swear you in. So if you can stand right here in front of the flag, get you to raise your right hand, and repeat after me. Aye, Sean Sue.
Aye, Sean Sue.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard to fulfill my responsibilities.
That I will work hard to fulfill.
My responsibility. Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
Of the.
Office of Honorary.
Of the Office of the Honorary Commissioner.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Thank you. We've got a little certificate here for you and we're going to get a picture here in just a little bit. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself, where you go to school and what, what you're hopeful to accomplish?
Um, I'm Sean Sue. I go to St. Joe's School. I'm an eighth grader. I play basketball for the school. When I'm older, I want to be a lawyer and I'm just blessed to be here right now.
Oh, that's awesome. Where do you think you want to go to school? Any idea?
Oh, I'm going to Spring Moose.
Yeah. Where, where do you think you might want to go to college? It's too far out.
I was thinking of. Uh, Shepherd University. Either that or WVU.
Wow.
Cause my sister goes to WVU.
I, I put two daughters through WVU. It's a, it's a, it's a unique town, but it's a great school. Any other questions?
And you said you like play basketball.
Yes, sir.
You know, Mr. Gokenauer Denders, is there a teacher? Can you beat her? You can? Check whether they're receiving. Okay. All right. Very good.
Who's your coach? Vic Lupus? Yeah. I know him very well.
Yeah, we know old Vic.
So Sean's mom and dad, he, he comes from a bloodline that likes education, right Sean? What do your mom and dad do?
They're doctors.
And they're going to allow you to be an attorney.
Hey, world needs good doctors and the world needs good attorneys, right? That's right. Nobody likes a lawyer till they need one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like blood, so.
Well, as you're here today with us and if you hear something that you want to put conjecture and or want to speak up to, please help yourself. You, the floor will be yours and if you have something you'd like to add to any of our conversation, please don't hesitate to do so. All right. Thank you very much for being here today. We appreciate you.
Thanks, Sean. Here's him in the interview schedule. For the cross interview for boards.
Uh, Tracy. Okay, up next we have Elizabeth Lapcheck, our grants administrator. Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning.
Morning. Morning, Liz.
As you guys know, in July, we came for you and asked if we could apply for the safer. Grant to hire twelve new firefighters. So today I'm here excited to ask you for permission to accept. The grant award. For the total award was three million, nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight. With the federal share being one million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. And then the required match is. One million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. Over three years.
Over three year period. Which one?
We, sir. We'll make it work.
Absolutely. Well, first off, once again, congratulations on this award because I know how. Hard you worked on it. I know the. Professional and. Just the strain and the stress and the desire to get this accomplished, how hard you worked and thank you very much.
My pleasure.
I mean, this, this is almost like a personal thing. I know it was, so. You know, and it gives, it gives us an opportunity for Chief Roberts Department to continue to grow and to serve as public. And as I had mentioned in the past, you know, the safety factor involved, not only with, with the public, but with the firemen. Themselves is very, very important and the efficiency. Of those guys when they go to work, being able to, to do multitasking at, at one time with, instead of. Each guy being able to just take care of one thing. Now they'll be able to take care of multiple. Requirements of their job in a much more safe and efficient manner. And. You know, this, this makes their ability to serve the public that much better. And that's what we strive for. Every day and I hope you're as successful with our cops grant as what you have been with this grant. Because we also need to grow our law enforcement. So. I would entertain a motion from the commission to accept this grant.
Be my pleasure to. Make that motion.
It'd be my pleasure to second it.
Yeah, we're all pleasured today. It's been first motion and, and second. Any further discussion?
I, I would just like to, to thank Liz. First of all, thank you for your professionalism and all your hard work and. And I so enjoy our conversations on Thursday morning. I've gotten to know you and, and consider you a, a friend and, and. Just appreciate your hard work and your dedication to Berkeley County and, and always working and striving to make our county better through our grants. Process. So I just wanted you to know how much I appreciate you and appreciate all your hard work.
Just a little tidbit. It, it's easy to accept the grant for me to sit here and make that motion. But to maintain it to the integrity that it needs to be maintained so we can apply for it again. So I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you so much. Chad too. Let's give Chad a shout out. Absolutely. I mean, it was.
And Chief back there in his stance.
It's a total.
And Lieutenant Gorman.
It was a total team effort and that's what so many people don't understand. Gary was involved, Chad, the, the Fire Department. You know, the International Association of Firefighters were involved in reviewing and making some suggestions and stuff. So, but when you can get everybody together pulling in the same direction, we can make good things happen. And that's, that's what we need to continue to do.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, it's been motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. Thank you. All right, Gary, got some so close equipment.
You do? As the commission will remember or recall, you, you recently had a bid opening for new long guns for the Sheriff's Department. And as they've gone through that process and reviewed their, they're prepared to make a recommendation for purchase, but part of that. Purchase is their opportunity to trade in their existing rifles as part of a credit to make the, the, the actual purchase affordable. So. You have in front of you a, a declaration, a surplus that lists. All of their current AR fifteens as well as some ancillary. Gun stuff from holsters, very little, six items or so, a magazine and, and, and a locking fork and everything. So. In order for the sheriff to be able to trade those in, the commission needs to declare the old equipment surplus so that can happen.
Okay. Are they going back to Daniel Defense? Does that?
They're going to the, they'll be traded back into the supplier that quoted the new and I don't, I say no only because I don't know who the, the bidder was, John.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Tactical.
Atlantic.
That's exactly who it was. So they would go to Atlantic Tactical. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, they'll refurbish those and, and those trade-in rifles are highly sought after.
Okay, the motion to approve the declaration of surplus equipment for the Sheriff's Department.
So moved. I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion. Say aye.
Aye.
As have it.
Aye.
All right. Okay, next up is our MS four discussion. Commissioner Catlet, you have the floor, sir.
Well, I, I just, it's interesting. I just got a text from Harold Ward, Secretary of the DEP. I texted him earlier this morning thanking for work on another project. But he just, so he texts me back just now and said. Your individual permit is slated to be out the door today or tomorrow. Amazing. Should have in hand. We've been waiting. I've been in here almost three years and we've been waiting three years for this to happen. So. I know one of my first meetings three years ago most was. We agreed to be co-permittees with the Stormwater District to get this new permit and. It's like, are we ever going to get it? So it, it's happening. What this means is, is that. It'll actually be on the growth area of Berkeley County and not include the entire Berkeley County. So the Back Creek. Creek area of Berkeley County will be a, out of the permit area now. And so the folks that have been paying fees in that part of the county will no longer need to do so and. We can exempt them from those fees and it also, the reason. Why it was felt important to go with the individual permit as opposed to the new statewide general permit. There's two reasons. One, if we would choose to modify the permit, it would be a lot easier to do it as an individual permit than it would under the general permit. And also the fact that the general permit is something new and even though it's supposed to be similar. Until we see it in the works and see it in motion and see it happening. And let other people maybe be the guinea pig as to fall under that general permit. I, I guess I assume at some point in time, we would have the option to join that as opposed to an individual permit if we so choose. But. I was under the understanding several years ago. When they first started talking about the statewide general permit, that there wouldn't be a choice, that. They would, they would eliminate all the individual permits and you'd only, your only option was to join the general permit. But they're, they're giving that option to everybody. There's fifty-some. MS four permits in the state of West Virginia. We're the only county. And we do have that option and the option by Richard Lewis, he felt, and by the Stormwater Board Tuesday night. And those of you that I've talked to is to go with the individual permit and we'll have that in hand here in the next day or so. So. I, I want to thank Secretary Ward and, and his follow-up. I certainly want to thank Richard Lewis, the attorney that works for the district down in Charleston. He's as good as it gets. And I want to thank Curtis Keller, the General Manager of the Sewer District, but also in charge of the Stormwater. And I want to thank the Board of Directors of the Stormwater District, President Greg Rowe, John Kunkel and John Myers. We're, we're very fortunate to have some good people serving on that board. And they also serve on the sewer board as well. Greg even serves on the water board. They give a lot of time to this community for the betterment of Berkeley County and I really appreciate their efforts. So. It's just really exciting day to me to see this thing come to fruition. So.
Absolutely. And just so the public knows, I mean, there's, there's a lot of work that gets done. Through communication to. Commissioner Hardy and myself through. Former Senator Blair, through Senator Capito's office have worked to try and get us. If we cannot get out from underneath because the county volunteered to. Do the entire county. Under, under this permit. So we were trying to go back and say, hey, well, if we volunteer to do it, can we volunteer to get out of it? So those were stuff that even folks on the federal level, we've been trying to work on because nobody.
Nobody has the answers.
Well, they don't, but at the same time, everybody despises this. And, and everybody that's ever sitting these chairs up here getting beat up on this thing and we don't like it either. You know, so I, I will say that, that this commission has worked extremely hard in trying to either eliminate. Or reduce those responsibilities and not necessarily responsibilities. But the financial responsibilities of, of those permits. So. It, it takes, there's, there's not one person up here that can do anything by themselves and it takes cooperation of everybody. To get things accomplished and not just always on our level, even the state and the federal level. So. You know, we got lots of partners out there and. You know, we, we try to, try to do good business and, and do the business that we are elected to do. So.
But I, I feel like we've been attacking this from all angles. It really has been. A full press from all angles. Steve's been working with the, the, the DEP and, and on this permit side of it and. We've all been working with Senator Capito's office. We've worked at the state level with former Senator Craig Blair. Access Strategies has worked to get us in touch with the people that we need to be in touch with and it's. It's really been a full court press to try to, to do as much as we can to skinny down this permit, get this new permit. And then there's still much work to be done and you know, we're going to continue to work on what we can, the, the low hanging fruit and. And working around the edges, but I, I would, I would say that, that we have all come from different angles. And, and tried to attack this thing and left no stone unturned. So, you know, as Commissioner Gokenauer said. We hate this stormwater management fee as much as any of our taxpayers and constituents do.
I remember the day that. Implemented. It was a horrible thing to have to do. It was either that or the. Technically, the county was going to get shut down.
Yeah.
By the DOJ.
There was no, no question about that. And I, I tell people that all the time. Why do you even have this permit and play, or this fee? And, and you know, even if we didn't have an MS four permit, we're still blinded by the Clean Water Act of the federal government and federal law to abide by that. So. You know, there, there is good in this in the sense that we want to protect our environment and our water. But at the same time, a lot of people feel that there's, as government usually does at the federal level, overreaches in some points and.
An unfair tax.
Right. So, but. At least in this situation, we have a chance to modify it even more in the future. And this is a great first step in my mind to getting this thing corrected.
I got to also tell you that, you know, when it was first implemented and then the talk was trying to volunteer to, to remove ourselves. It was like poking to the wall here. You just, you didn't get any response from anybody. And to be where we're at today with it, it's, it's quite, it's been quite a feat.
Yeah. Well, there's been. Several commissions trying to work on. To, to get something accomplished for us.
But. I was, I was grim hope. To get us to this point, but I'm.
Yeah.
Very rewarding now.
But like, you know, Steve has developed a really good relationship with the Secretary of DEP. And when we were there. Didn't necessarily accuse him, but I questioned him about when, when we send paperwork down there for approvals, it seemed like it falls on a. In a dark hole or on somebody's desk and he assured us that, that things were going to change and they have. We're, we're getting responses back in timely manner and that's, that's. That's speed of light for the state of West Virginia to do. So we're very thankful for their cooperation. All right. Let's go and finish our business for today. Any items from the public? We let the record show there's no, nobody from the public to speak. We do have a need for executive session for economic development and legal ma- and legal matters.
Do we want a break so we can take a picture?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. And. So we're going to take a short break for right now and get some pictures. Before we go into executive session. So we'll, we'll take a short break. before we go into executive session. So we'll, we'll take a short break.
We're back in session. There will be no action taken in a motion to recess.
Mr. President, I move that we recess.
We are in recess.